Everybody to the Planning Commission meeting tonight. It's Wednesday, June 26, 2024. All the commissioners are here present. We will call the meeting to order. Commissioner Henry, would you offer invocation for us? And Commissioner Stout, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Those present would like to join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible,
Thank you. Are there any present here who would like to make any public comment about anything? We usually allow a couple of minutes for anybody who wants to have their say in our meeting. Let's see, you raise your hands. Yeah, this, we're kind of flexible, but if you've got something you'd like to say, Diane, you're welcome to come to the microphone here and share.
But you need to come to them.
I know, I'm just trying to, I just did some research and, I mean, so it feels like it would be more appropriate when you get to that part.
We can accommodate that if you want to wait. Okay. We'll go to number five, item five on the agenda approval of May 14, 2024. Planning Commission meeting minutes, sent them out to everybody. I didn't get any feedback of corrections, which is a first for a long time. But thank you for the reviews that you. No, I knew it, but I don't know it. On this one?
Yeah.
Okay, I know the one before you did. Okay. I'm trying to think now if I corrected them, but I. Okay. And I, I think I did that. So, well, I'll take a motion on the minutes for, to approve them as corrected where necessary. Okay, is there a second to that?
I have a second to that.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of final plat approval for Ranch Knoll, part of the Summit Creek 7 development. So, Bucky, we'll turn the time over to you. You'd like to orient us a little bit on Ranch Knoll and what your plans are there. All the commissioners have a copy of the construction drawings if you want to use that by reference. Just come up, yeah, come up and turn that green, that button on, it'll turn green.
Well, thanks for the time and helping us work through this. I'm not a ton to say here. We, we were hoping to have higher density on that parcel of land. And after studying it with engineers, that we decided it's best to do just two big lots on that property because there's a really steep slope on the one end and want to keep houses away from that slope and, and, you know, less to deal with, with bigger lots. So, so we're just trying to simplify it and, and just get the final plat approved. There will be, instead of putting an actual road in, there'll be a shared driveway, like what's been done in other areas of Woodland Hills. And so the, the property owners will, you know, deal with the, with the longer driveway going in to access the different properties. So, so we, we've been talking with Jimmy DeGraffnerite here about that property and, and leaning on his experience with it as well. Would you, do you have anything to add?
Are there any questions that any of you have?
Yeah, I have a question. So, this is not a flag lot because it has frontage?
Yes.
Even though the driveway is on the other side?
Yeah. Yeah, because of that hill that's right there, you really can only access the property from just that narrow strip of the frontage. Where you see on the plan that the, that the driveway goes into the, into the property. That's about the only section of the frontage that's, that's accessible because of that hillside. So, that hillside coming down to the road, the intent is that will remain the natural vegetation, kind of a, kind of a buffer between, you know, manicured properties and the road.
That shared driveway will also be the easement for the water line running up. And there'll be a hydrant then at the, at the top of, of lot number one. Because of the distance from the main, from the, from the road up to there, it requires a hydrant. So, there will be a hydrant up at the top there to service those lots one and two should there be a need.
Will the water meters for both homes be at the end of the driveway by the street?
Yes.
That's by the, by the, between the first, the lot number two and the road, is that the triangular piece? The intent is just that that remains open and, and, you know, natural vegetation between lot number two and the road. Yeah. Yeah, if you actually look, lot, lot one wraps, wraps around lot two, and then it connects that triangular piece that you're talking about. So, the owner of lot one would end up maintaining that buffer and vegetation.
This will all be part of the HOA.
Yeah.
That.
Yep. Yeah, that's a good question.
So, they're moving the road, the access road further south, I guess.
Yeah, up the hill.
Where it is right now.
Yeah.
So, it's not going to be a steep hill.
Yep. Yeah, the, with the, where the stub is right now, that you've probably seen, the prior engineering plans we had, were intended to cut into that hillside, cut into the crest of that hillside with the road. And after studying that hillside, it's a very steep hillside to cut a road into. It's, it's probably, probably not the smartest thing to do. So, we would rather just err on the side of safety and keep houses and roads away from that steep hillside.
I think the benefit to that as well is when you come off that hill, where that existing cutout is, is kind of in that plane spot. This will make it so the cars come out a little bit.
Yeah. To see traffic, is that what you're saying? That's a good point.
Just for coming in and out of that. Right now, that's, I don't know, I've come off that hill probably too fast.
Yeah, of course, right? Yeah, that's a good point. That's a really good point.
So, that's, that's actually going to help.
And they, there's, there's all, there's enough room and everything there that as, as the owners of lots one and two, they'll be coming, they won't be backing out. They'll come face forward and so they'll be able to have a better look at traffic along Summit Creek Drive there.
So, does lot two touch Summit Creek Drive or is it kind of surrounded by lots of ways and it's a flag lot?
Good question.
I thought we didn't allow flag.
Well, flag lots don't, they, they technically, are you saying lot one or lot two?
Lot two.
There is a driveway access that, with that shared driveway and the width of it, it kind of takes it out of the realm of being a flag lot. Because there is frontage on that, on the road, the access road coming up there.
For lot two?
Yes. Lot two will be serviced by that driveway as well.
Yeah, but I thought we had a rule that you had to have so much frontage for any lot on the street.
I see what you're saying. With the button.
Yeah, there's 60-foot frontage.
Technically, it doesn't have any frontage from the road from Summit Creek Drive.
I mean, I don't know why we don't allow more flag lots, but.
Is that me honking?
Every drive you please.
Yeah, sounds like my own.
I, I thought the triangle was part of lot two.
The definition of a flag lot is a lot near a driveway that provides access to the street from a public or private road that doesn't reach, lead to the little land that makes it a flag.
Yeah, I thought we had to have, was it 60 feet of frontage on?
It's, yeah, it's 60 feet.
Why don't you hook the triangle to lot two?
Sorry, what was that?
Why don't you connect the triangle to lot two?
Just because of lot one. Okay, what?
Wants it?
Yeah.
Basically.
Well, it's easier to maintain that, right? Need to get around that without having to cut through that.
I think you raised a good point, Laurie. I think it got away from us in looking at the design of this.
Yeah, lot two just touches Summit Creek Drive on that east side? And then one and one would have two separate pieces or? Or do we change the rule for everyone?
If you took.
If you took that down there, wouldn't you have to have like a Crocs access agreement and everything else between those two so they could get around it? Bottom?
If you took lot two all the way to Summit Creek Drive.
At least on 60 feet of it.
And then gave, gave an easement to lot one to cross that and get over to the other triangle, the smaller triangle.
Would you say kind of lot two all the way down?
Down to Summit, 60.
Correct. Or 60 feet of it so that there's frontage there and then take an easement across that 60 feet so that that connects, that connects lot one with that, with that triangle below two.
Yeah, so, so what is, there's a code that says you don't allow flag lots?
Yes.
Is that, is that new or something?
No. It's been there for.
We used to allow them though.
I was going to say, there's clearly flag lots and, you know, and.
And they're older ones and that, they decided not to have them anymore, so they put this ordinance in there against flag lots. Pardon?
It's a fire thing.
Yes, yes.
That's the other thing is, is Ted okay with a fire truck going in right there? It's wide, that road's wide.
It is, it's like. I think it's 28 feet wide.
And our intent was just to make sure that they wouldn't have the option to be able to come in and build.
From Summit Creek Drive.
Along Summit.
We wanted to make sure that the house was up.
How would you, how would, how would that work if, if you, if lot two came all the way down to Summit Creek Drive and part of it for 60 feet? To give you the required frontage and then take an easement through that 60 feet since Jimmy's going to own and end up owning the whole piece? And then take that easement over to the non-lot portion of that? So, there's free access that he has. It just extends lot two for 60 feet out on the Summit Creek so that it addresses the issue of the flag lot.
And you talk about the house and lots.
Yeah. And that still gives you control then of that.
He'd have full control of it.
Other piece there.
And it would be considered one lot, right? The kind of two pieces would be considered one lot?
No.
No.
It would be an unbuilt-on piece of property. Because that easement, that.
I'm just thinking like, we don't want to pay too.
Oh, I, I think you're right. I think you're right, maybe, Jimmy, because the 20, the, the private drive connects, connects those two. So, it would still be just, it'd be one piece. Yeah. Are you good with that approach? Okay.
He's, he's my agent.
Yes. I understand.
I think so.
Somebody else is worried 20 years.
That's right. We're going to be here.
Okay. Good. Any other questions or comments?
Do you want me to stay in the hot seat for the next?
Yes, yes. Well, no, we'll, we'll need, we want, any, any other comments or questions that you've got? Okay, we're, so we'll, I'll take a motion then to, on this. Motion can go either way, as you know, recommend for or recommend against. If it's for, then we'll want to make that adjustment as we've talked about here to avoid the flag lot issue.
I'll make a recommendation to approve this, what subdivision?
Yes, Ranch Knoll.
Ranch Knoll subdivision with the amendment to connect lot two to Summit Creek Drive for at least 60 feet so that we do not have a flag. And an easement granted to lot one through the 60 feet?
Yes.
Yes. Second that.
All in favor of a positive recommendation to the council? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll follow through with that and that'll be on the second Tuesday in July, city council meeting.
Thank you.
So, okay, thank you. Okay, let's, item number seven is the second look and review of the final plat for G1 Phase A called a retreat. Go ahead and share with us, Bucky, a little bit about that subdivision.
Yes, so this.
Part of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with our development agreement with the city, we have a preliminary master plan approved and it's part of that development agreement. And this is the, this is the next phase that we want to develop in that preliminary plat. And from, everything I understand is everything mirrors what the city approved with that preliminary plat. What you're seeing on this final plat, everything is the same as what's on that preliminary plat that's part of our development agreement. So, so that's, that's kind of the status with this. We're just looking, seeking approval so that we can start to develop, finish the format.
There was a little bit of adjustment, I think, from the preliminary on the, on the, on the bottom side of that one plat. And this has been, and you can, on the, on the other plats, you see it's a cul-de-sac that they're going through there. On the original preliminary plat, it wasn't. The West Loafer went all the way down through to Bear Hollow. And that, that won't be happening, but it, it is shown on the other plats in the construction drawings that that is a cul-de-sac and making a couple of minor changes to the lot configurations on lots two 16 and two 17 there. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Bucky, is, is the home, is the Rett Smith home going to be behind the gate?
Yeah.
Okay, so that gate is going to be, be out to, just be on his driveway then? Okay. Right now, his driveway comes out onto Loafer Drive. It's not a Summit Creek driveway. It's a Loafer Drive. And so the gate will come out just beyond that and towards Summit Creek. The. No. Mick Hill's old house is, is lot 171. And then Glenn Anderson is across the road from that, just to orient you a little bit. No, on, well, it might be on, on your map. I'm looking at one map where it's not. No, 209 is not. It'll be part of the development. 171 is, in that stretch of road, that's West Loafer that we're going to be building and making. Okay? So, Glenn Anderson is on the north, north side, opposite from 171.
He would be to the right on this plat, right at Phase F 53. Is that, that's Glenn's?
Yes.
The, on the other side of that unfinished section of.
Yes. Yep. So.
So, the gate will be just after Glenn Anderson, well.
Oh, so that, so you know the section that's not finished?
Yeah.
If you went west across that dirt road and you got to Summit Creek Drive.
Okay.
And kept going west, the gate would be right.
Probably the gate right in here.
And that you're.
So, between the, the turn in his driveway, the gate will be right there.
Yeah.
Smith's driveway.
Any, any questions, any other questions that any of you have? I, I should say, these, both of these have been reviewed by Jones and DeMille and they've made a few comments and I've sent those comments out to everybody on, on those sheets and those have, have been addressed. Either corrections or changes have been made to the plat or there's notes on the plat. And I'm speaking of both, both developments. There's notes on the plat that indicate that those will be complied with. The issues that the Jones and DeMille reviewer had and those satisfy the city requirements that, that were raised from the review.
It's got four of those lots. For case in, through Summit Creek. They will all, that will be the rear.
Yes, those lots will. The front will be South Loafer Drive. Correct.
So, what happened?
That's a good question. Wayne brought that up. It's part of our review of the final plat. I believe a note got added to the plat that said that they had to stay 30 feet off the frontage of Summit Creek Drive. Not only that, but our CCNRs will only let you fence. It will only let you manicure, I think, 25% of your backyard and you can only fence off the manicured part. So, for this very reason, we don't want, nobody wants Summit Creek Drive to be lined with fences. Yeah, we don't want it, the city doesn't want it, residents don't want it. So, that's a good question.
Is there an existing sewer already there that's in where they're turning the road where it used to go up to Bear Hollow?
Yeah.
So, that, is that going to be taken out or changed? Is this going to be left and then abandoned?
So, part of the plat has an easement that will go to.
So, the easement's going to stay or is that going to be changed?
It's going to stay.
It's going to stay there.
And it's going to be, it's being used, that sewer by, by the house.
I was going to say, it's probably, my house is probably going through there.
Yeah, it's above there on.
Yeah, above, just above here.
Yeah, so there's water, there's sewer that's in that and it will stay. And there's an easement in the construction documents so the city can get in there and, maintain it, service it as they need to.
So, the drives will go just over that?
Yeah.
Yes.
And there's manholes strategically placed so that it's accessible and can be fully serviced if needed.
Well, the city will have easement to service those facilities on the private road. If you look carefully, there's, there is a line that comes down off of Loafer Drive to those lots.
Yeah. They all have frontage on that cul-de-sac.
If I understood, you had a discussion with Jody, that, that loaf, that's going to stay Loafer Drive? Well, it's not going to, it'll go into South Loafer Drive from Loafer Drive? Okay.
That's the name of it now and Jody arm wrestled with us and she won and got us to keep the name.
Okay.
South Loafer.
Yeah.
Cool. How many feet frontage there is in that lot then? Very much.
So, no, I don't remember.
It's, it's likely 60 feet, thereabouts. Yeah.
That's what the mail's for you. Topography up here, it's really hard land to develop.
We all have crackers.
Any other thoughts or questions? Yeah, there weren't a lot of major changes in the, in the review. To credit of Summit Creek and, and wildly engineering, they've done a pretty good job with the layouts and so forth.
And a lot of work went into the preliminary plat that was approved a few years ago with the, with the development agreement and, and we, we spent a lot of time with the city, the, the city's engineer and our engineer just really making sure everything is fine with codes and working out on the utility, everything. So hopefully now that we come home with these final plats, matching the preliminary plat, we should make cities lightning.
Yeah. And that's why we spend quite a bit of time with the preliminary so that they're, we don't have to make too many adjustments as we go to the final.
Yeah.
Plat, it's already laid out.
I have a question, it's not a change question, but this future Eagle Nest Drive that comes off of that cul-de-sac, the Loafer Drive, where does that come out?
Where, like, you know.
Where's, so it goes up, yeah, where's it in adjacent to the existing cul-de-sac at the bottom?
And then, like, where, where does the road go from there? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, where does, it goes, you see it come off of there, it's future.
So that bulb that's there right now, the end of the cul-de-sac, yeah, that will, that will continue on down that ridge.
Okay.
And it's, yeah, it's going to go all, I, I don't know if you've ever hiked down that ridge or anything. You know, where we've done all that dirt work down there at the end of that ridge, that's where the intersection will be to drop it back down to this, this plat, this retreat plat. Where you got a lot of excavation on that, on that ridge.
It's a lot of.
This is going to use a hill on the hillside.
And we won't press it.
Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, we'll take a motion on the retreat.
I'll make a motion to recommend City Council Final Plat, D one, Phase A.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll say.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Very well.
Thank you.
Move that forward then to, to the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay. I'll make sure Ben's here next time.
He does.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks, Bucky. Okay, item number eight, update on the general plan. Uh, Severin, Lori, do you want to share? I know you had a meeting here a week or so ago. What's your, what's your take on things and we're just kind of getting started here with it.
Yeah, we're just getting started. Anything to say that we even talked about?
We all introduced ourselves.
That's about all we did. Listen, you know, listen to what Sunrise and they're saying. And I mean, we made some points that, one of the things I think I said was we need to make sure that zoning act is up to date because it's awfully out of date and in the general plan. And there are a bunch of other things in the general plan that are awfully out of date. We stressed the same ways that that's some of the focus that they should have.
I think.
Anything else, Lori?
Well, they said that they will be, um, coming out with meetings or flyers and surveys and that within hills days. About trying to get the, the community and.
Are the surveys are going to the community?
Yeah.
Not just the committee?
Oh, no.
I think they were going to try and get as many residents as possible.
I'll have a booth of Woodland Hills days. And we'll answer any questions.
Okay. Are they going to use that opportunity to do a survey? Somebody coming by and give them a, a sheet to.
They talked about that. I don't know that.
Well, I think they may, it may be some online survey. That's what I kind of gathered.
Oh, yeah.
Has that QR codes or, you know, different ways to try and.
Okay. Very good. Any, any other? Don, did you have a question?
I just wondered, felt comfortable with, seemed like they have a good plan so far. Do they talk about what their, what their processes are?
No, I felt comfortable.
Felt good with.
Yeah, I'm not sure when our next meeting was up to.
The, uh, the company Sunrise who got the, the bid on it, they've done this before uh, with, with general plans. I don't know how much experience they've had with strategic plans. Some, but I think they're, they've had more experience with general plan. Strategic plans is kind of a new thing for us and other cities as they're doing that too. So they kind of feel their way a little bit through this strategic plan process, but they should be pretty well founded with the, with the general plan. I wanted to say too that if, as you're going through this with, with the group, if you see areas that we, we've never addressed before in the general plan and you feel we need to bring that up. There may be some new areas completely that we haven't really, one, one thing came to my mind was, uh, city administration. As, as we go forward, that maybe there's some areas there that could be touched on to, to help, to help us as a city with different things and that would fit into a general plan. So just keep that in mind as, as you go forward with, um, with the meetings and things and and maybe there won't be, but if, if you feel that there would be good to, to put a section in there on, on some city administration and it's certainly, I think, appropriate to do so. So. Appreciate both of you being willing to serve on that and it's kind of, it's, it's a new way of doing it that we've never done before, so we're, the city's kind of feeling their way through it all, but appreciate your willingness to serve and help there. Next item on the agenda is short-term rental ordinance. I wanted to alert you all here that in my, I don't know if you've seen that, paid much attention to the city newsletter. They decided to name a part of it Wayne's World. And, uh, it'll be a monthly article for me for, for whatever I feel that needs to be done with planning commission or zoning or ordinance driven or whatever. Ted's got one there, I think it's Ted Talk, is it?
Ted Talk.
That, that, all on, on fire and, and, uh, things of that nature. So anyway, the article in July, which will come out a couple of days, is on, um, sh- uh, short-term rentals. I think there's different opinions, obviously, in the city, whether they're good or whether they're bad. Some cities have them, some cities don't. And, uh, I'll, I'll give you a little, uh, preview. We talked to our attorneys about short-term rentals and the thought of just denying them altogether in the city. And the, our attorneys responded, you can do that, but he said, there's, there's quite a, a group in, some in the legislature and some who are lobbyists that would oppose that. And doing away with them outright. And they, they have quite a, um, quite a voice in it. And, uh, what they suggested to us to do was to allow them, but with a lot of, um, I'm hesitant to say roadblocks, but with, with a lot of criteria that is justified in, in a short-term rental. And they said, that way the city allows them, but there's a lot of controls placed on them. And I know one of the main concerns that the residents have is you get, you know, a group of people running it, they're not aware of our ordinances, particularly fire ordinances. Uh, you've got possible rowdy group of people living next door to you. And, um, some, some cities, I've looked at some, some of the ordinances and some cities show that, um, don't allow, uh, that they, they require somebody in the city to be the responsible party. They don't have to live at the place, uh, but some designated person in the city so that if issues do arise, then there's somebody locally that you can go to if there's problems.
Like a property manager type position?
Yeah. So that was one, one caveat that, that was suggested that we, that we consider. I, I took two or three different cities in the state, their ordinances on it as well as the state criteria and put an ordinance together, a draft ordinance. And, uh, just to give everybody a sense of what an ordinance would be. And that can be added to or taken away from. Included in that was, and I'm, I can't remember now if I, if you, if you've seen that in the draft or not. Do, uh, do you remember? Have it? Okay. I'll send it to you.
I'm, I'm a little confused. Because didn't we pass an ordinance on to the City Council and they tabled it?
They did. So this is in furtherance of trying to address concerns that the council had and they wanted to solicit more input from residents.
So they've sent it back to us for more.
Correct. They tabled it, they didn't take a vote on it.
Yeah, I understand.
So they said, we'd like you, Planning Commission, to do some more research on it. And that was a rather short ordinance. What, from my research, what I've done is added quite a bit to that with criteria uh, and regulations to help govern that.
I mean, some of the stuff that you're talking about, like having a proper humanity or somewhere in the city. That was in what we did. You had to have, the resident had to be there, living in the house. That was in the ordinance we gave the city.
I don't think so. I think that was.
I think the, the person had to be on site.
Yes, they had to be.
But this, this comfort, this, what some cities have done, have appointed, well, the owners of the property have appointed one person in the city to be a point of contact. And that wasn't in what we drafted.
Oh, no.
Okay.
What we drafted was more stringent.
It was.
Than what you're proposing.
Uh, well, no, that, that's what some cities have done. I didn't, I took that out. I didn't, I didn't include that in, in the, in the draft that I did. Another thing that, that we included in there, and I haven't gotten any pushback from it. Um, and I don't know if it's because of lack of attention of the City Council or not, but to add point four or five acre feet of water, additional water that a person would have to provide to the city.
So that's for, that was for the separate ADU.
And this is even for the, the rental house.
I thought this is to use.
I know, but it's.
It's addition.
For a garage type.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Separate building for the internal ADU. Did the internal ADU report one four five two? How do you think?
No.
It was only the separate.
Yes.
Yeah.
So with the, with the approval of the accessory apartment now, it makes, it a little, it facilitates things a little bit if the lot owner wants to stay in his home and rent out on a short-term basis, the apartment that he's now built. Or he himself, she can move to the apartment and rent the house. But it required the property owner to be on site. For, for it to be a rental. So anyway, those are, and in my Wayne's World article, I, I asked people to contact a member of the Planning Commission or City Council with their thoughts and views on it. So any, any thoughts that we gather, we'll, we'll put a thing together and give it to the City Council so they see the benefit of any contacts that we have or, or come to us.
So what else did the City Council have issue with or concern about?
Not a lot, just that.
They just want us to.
Some of them, some of them, most of them have reservations about it. But that's their own personal opinion. And they, they have a strong feeling that they, they want to certainly factor in what the community wants to do. Not, not give way to their own view, but certainly take that as a factor. So that's what they wanted to study more and, and they would may reach out to certain constituents uh, in the city, city residents and solicit their views and opinions on it. So let me, Brian, do you have any thoughts that you'd like to share with us? Okay?
So we did table it for one session and then it came back on our next one, just to kind of clarify that. And it did come back and we had a lot more discussion on it. And, you know, there, there are some things that that were brought up. Now, I'll tell you, I brought a lot of the stuff up. Again, looking at, at both sides of this, not from my personal viewpoint, but from, from the city viewpoint. That, that we want to look at again. I brought up the, uh, having someone in town rather than having someone on site because that does limit people from being able to do, to, to, to do a short-term rental if they don't have an ADU, whether detached or attached. One of the things that I brought up was property owner rights. Um, that's one of the things we don't, I've, I don't want to infringe on is property owners' rights. It's important to me as a property owner and important to me as a council person to make sure that we're allowing property owners to, to, within limits, um, have, have rights to do what they, what they want to on their property. And safety is a big part of that and, and, and Wayne had addressed that with, with a lot of signage in, on, on the sites that's, you know, talk about our, our ordinances. We talked about noise ordinances. We talked about, uh, you know, police and, and possible, uh, need, you know, getting more calls for those kind of things. So again, what we're looking for is, is something that, that we can live with, something that, that might make it so that, that it, that it, we can, we can either allow it or, or, or come back and say, there's just no way we can make this work within what we want as Woodland Hills. Now, we're looking for, for input. I've been talking to lots of residents, uh, in town and have lots of discussions on it. Um, and, and there's more to come. I'll be, I'll be asking for more input, um, after this meeting. Right, something tomorrow and, and I'm asking for input from residents as well. So we're, we're looking for, what is an ordinance you guys could put forward? We, there, there were some issues with the last one. We, we felt, some of us felt, um, that it, you know, it just didn't cover enough. I mean, we, we want to make. I mean, we, we want to make sure that our restrictions are such that, you know, we're, we're making sure that, that there's safety coverage, but we're also still letting property owners have, have the rights that they might want to. We know what's happening and, um, you know, we did talk about revenue stream, but it's really, when you really look at it, it's not going to be that much. But, um, if we could have some control over the, and, and, and get some, some of the safety things, because where we've had them before, we've seen bonfires and stuff like that that have been started. So we want to be able to, I'm, I'm asking for a, a, an ordinance that we can put out that will, that will help cover the safety of the city and the residents and, and do it, do our best to, to keep the feel of Woodland Hills and not turn us, you know, into some resort town where people are, are moving in and out on a weekly basis, so.
Well, I have a question about how, how we ought to make that look for the responsible party. How is that? I mean, is it, is, could it be a management company? Could it be that, or someone that lives in the city? I'm just not sure how that person, because it's hard for our staff now to do those types of things. And that's, there's just no way.
So what I've seen in other cities was that you had to have a designated property manager that could respond with a one-up.
So does the actual rental that, like, beginning and end, like on most of these Airbnbs, there's a beginning and end. If there's a manager, they, they initiate it, they make sure you check in. And that's kind of what we're looking for. I would think that would be...
I don't know how, how, how granular we need to get on that part of it. But I, I think we're more worried about if there is an issue, how can we, how can we as a city, whether it's the sheriff's department, the fire department, uh...
Who do they call?
Yeah, who do they call? Who do they get to, to come in and deal with, uh, a problem that, that's happening?
Because if the homeowner's out of town or the, or the individual that owns the property originally is gone, there's a problem, who do they call?
Who do they call and who do they get to? If there's parking on the street, we want to address, there can't be parking on the street. We can't have what happened up on Eagles Nest. We want to make sure that it's, it's within the, 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 the build capability of the driveway to keep the cars there and they're not parking, you know? We don't want cars parking on the grass because we start fires that way. We, we want to, what can, is there, is there a, a way of us doing this that gives enough control for the safety and, and the, the feel of Woodland Hills? Is there a way of us doing that? And that's, that's what we're, we're asking. That's what I'm asking for, um, and, and the rest of the council, well, those that were there actually, who thought it was a good idea to go back and readdress it. And I don't think this needs to be a today thing. I think this could really take some time and, and put some thought into it because it's important for our community. And, and if we decide that we're going to ban them completely, I don't want the state to come in like they did before and say, our ordinance that said you couldn't advert, you, you're not allowed to advertise them is now against state law, right? And, and so it allowed them and now it's, anybody could do it. Wayne's had neighbors, uh, that, that have done it. You could have someone who's renting it and, and wants to fill a gap while they're finding a long-term renter and would do a short term to help fill that gap while they're, while they're trying to find it. I don't, I'm, I'm just throwing things out there, things that people have talked.
I think that you're on the right track though. We need something, I, I've talked a lot about. We had a home in San Paulo, then Washington, and every other home in there was a, they were unlicensed for a term penalty. And on the weekends, it got crazy. So there, and there wasn't, there just wasn't those checks and balances that I think are important. That area, that area actually was meant to be a vacation area, right?
Yeah.
So it was kind of, it was understood to a point. But it got annoying for those who, we actually moved down there full-time. It became a thing to be worried about. I do understand what you're saying.
Thanks, Ryan. Diane, did you have some thoughts you'd like to share with us on it? Come on to the microphone and so it's...
I'll tell you what, I'll speed over.
That's fine.
I just thought...
I mean, and you introduce yourselves, sorry, Brian.
Diana Hackett. Um, I've talked tons about short-term rentals as well as ADUs, but not for the reasons any of you have, because I have disabled adult children that, like, I'd really like them not watching everything I'm doing all day long, having them some independence and me some independence. I wonder if someday I could create a space, but that's not what we're talking about right now. Um, short-term rentals, you know, it didn't just start in the last couple decades. It, it became big in the United States after World War II because suddenly we had this influx of military discharge people who didn't have anything. We also had communities where there were families that needed farmhands or whatever. And it has continued ever since. Um, and we, you referenced a little bit, ghost towns, they call them. Not the ghost town I grew up knowing what it was, but instead it's communities that have become nothing but the short-term rental communities. And there's no one connected to the, to the city anymore in that emotional vested way to create, continue what we have, which you referred to. So, you know, I don't even have an opinion, but I have done a lot of research and lots of brainstorming as to how could we be more careful in studying up? And I appreciate the council saying not yet, because I don't think there's enough even known how to carefully construct restrictions or guidelines or barriers or supports, because we do want to support our own homeowner who need, you know, has made a choice to rent their home for whatever reason. We still care about our neighbors, even if they are not currently living there. I wondered about permits. Have you, in your research, have you found any communities that require a permit to do that?
Yes, absolutely.
And do they find success? I mean, it's not going to give the city much money, but it, does that help offset something?
Um, I don't, I, I don't know that it, that, but what it does do is it allows us to make sure that there's, that there's safety measures in place, that there's the right fire extinguishers. Because we don't require a homeowner to have so many fire extinguishers, but we can require someone who's renting it out to have fire extinguishers in, you know? You know, so many within their home. Um, we can restrict, we can say, okay, you know, the house is a, a five-bedroom house. You can only have 10 people, right? Um, that's the, the max occupancy. You can't have people on the houses and things like that. Again, we look at the sewers, the septic, septic land or sewer system and make sure that it's capable of doing. That's what the inspections are really good for. Make sure there's good egress, that there's not some emergency that, that we, we end up having people hurt because they don't have egress. All those things, I think, is where the, the permit and the inspections come. And I, I believe we have those for the ADUs. And, and, and something, this would be even, even more extensive because of the, the...
Fluidity of the occupants, yeah.
Exactly. And having signage up that says, quiet hours are such and such to such and such. There's no open flames. There's, you know, and, and expressly lit, and, and that it's, that it's there. Because right now, the people that are renting it don't have a sign up.
Nor do they have four-by-fours in the winter, which is another concern I have. Where we could have more accidents up and down Woodland Hills, which is already, you know, three times a year. It's not often, but on those days, we all know.
Absolutely.
You're not going to get up or down.
So I think that's where inspections and our permits come in. It's not really a moneymaker, even hotel tax, which we'll be able to collect hotel tax. Well, you know, it, it's, it's insignificant.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's a little bit, but it's insignificant. It helps pay the worries.
People that we...
But I think it's about making sure that people who come here are, and I've talked about this with, with ADUs as well, that they come here with, they're not ready for our winter, like you talked about. They're not ready for getting out after, after a two-foot storm. Um, and, and things like that. And we make sure through these inspections, well, I don't like big government. I, I think we should allow people to do things that they want to do, but we need to make sure that, that we're covering the safety stuff. And that's what I'm looking at. And, and just to be honest, when I take off my, my councilperson hat and put on my resident hat, I don't want a party house next to where I'm at. Nobody does, right? I mean, that's not what we, what we came to Woodland Hills. But I still have to respect it. If I want to do something with my property, I, I should have the right to do it. Something else, something different with their property, I think we should, within limits, allow that as a resident. And that's getting with my council.
Um, I appreciate that. What about penalties?
It would be ordinance penalties.
Yeah.
Uh, if they're violating any of those requirements and so forth, that the city would happen to establish and even, even operate. Right now, we don't have an ordinance against it. So anybody could do that if they chose to do it under their own terms. But if they, if, once we have an ordinance and they violate any part of that, then they can be fined. It's, it's rather, you, you go to the homeowner, whoever owns the property, they're the responsible party. It's a rather...
That's who you have the contract with and then they have their own contract with their resident.
Now, there's one, one issue that, why so much of this is underground? And people don't get commits, permits, is they lose their property tax exemption if they rent their home for so many days of the year. So that's 45% right there that they, and so they don't register with the city.
That's why they do it.
And so we don't know what they're doing and it becomes a problem. Now, that, that, that would be in place whether they, whether we have an ordinance or not. You know, people not signing up and going through the process.
But if we don't have an ordinance, there's no reason for someone to say something about that happening.
Another concern I have is just the obvious, the people that aren't here, don't know my family, because I'm going to be selfish, don't know, I mean, you know, and you know, that's it. Partied down the street the other day and it was, you know, the music was great, it was awesome. But the cars that, from attending were parked all the way, almost Woodland Hills Drive. And I felt very vulnerable with my disabled adult children behind me. And I feel like, then I, I told Jody, I'm like, I need an eight-foot fence. And she said, you can have one, but, you know, she sent the ordinance and, no, my house is the back of our main piece of property. So I can't have a fence where we play and where we guard it. Not without coming to you guys and asking for variance. But, you know, we might need to look at our fencing restrictions because we, as residents, want to know that we are safe.
Well, there, there may be a need to adjust a number of ordinances, uh, up or down, so to speak. You know, if other ordinances have an impact on one way or the other. Certainly something that we would always take into consideration and look at and try to level the playing field, so to speak, with, with things that we, we do. And sometimes there's, there are unintended consequences. And we, we would do everything we can to try to address that and, and in the best way that we can. Still may not satisfy everybody and, and whatnot, but, uh, there's a lot of moving parts to those kinds of things.
What is, thank you. What is our, our end goal in addressing short-term rentals? The goal is we provide a way for residents to do it in the safest and most community-supportive manner? I mean, I think it would be ideal to identify what the, what the goal is.
Sure.
And then make sure...
And that's, we as, as planning commission and city council have that responsibility to, to the residents here. If we pass an ordinance, what, what effect does that have on, on the community, on, on everybody? Are we taking everything into consideration? And everybody has their own views on things too, but it, it's a balancing act. We, uh, as, as Brian said, sometimes we have our own opinion, but that opinion is suppressed as we look at those that we represent and they have other stronger feelings, not stronger feelings, different feelings about things. And, uh, that's, we're here representing the, the people in the community, so.
I would say don't suppress your feelings, but it outweighs, if you're the only one here, it just outweighs.
No, we, we want opinions, so we, that's, and that's the reason I put this Wayne's World article together for people to share their opinions. So we want to know how they, how they feel. It's not unusual. We have one person here, planning commission meeting, or nobody here. So it, it is hard to get participation.
I would be here every week if I didn't have what I have.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
And we wish more would show up.
And you can join.
Yeah, my house?
So, is there anything else you would like to?
I don't think so. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Is that it for me, Wayne?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Brian. Um, I don't have anything else.
Should we talk about short-term rentals in the long-term plan? The general plan? Is that something that ought to be maybe brought up with summit or is that a bad idea?
Well, at this point, I think it's a bad idea. Until the city can decide...
Where we're at.
Where we're at and which direction we ought to go, I don't see any reason to put it in the general plan. Because in the general plan, they'd say, you know, the only reason we'd put it in there is if we were going to allow it.
Right.
And since we don't know that at this point, uh, but, and if something happened, then the city said, okay, we will allow it, then, you know, maybe we ought to address it.
I, I think too, it's, uh, it really doesn't mesh with affordable housing. You know, it's a whole separate issue out there. So, because we do have a affordable housing component to our general plan.
Yeah, they, right. They, they try to make it sound like it's affordable housing. But it is not. It is, it's definitely not affordable housing.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, I think that's the opposite story at the state level.
Right, that's what they, that's how they present it.
And our apartment thing was a bit towards helping that out with our city, accessory apartments.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure as an old line economist, that a separate apartment is going to be a lot cheaper than that main house. That are being rented for four and $5,000 a month in this community. You're not going to get, it's going to be much more reasonable for a small apartment unit that's separate from that main house. And it would fall in your affordable house. Well, I, I want to bring this up and then it's going to sound like some breaks. And there's certain standards. Uh, last meeting, we approved or disapproved resiling to an R-119.
Talking about the flattery?
Yeah.
The flattery?
And the city council approved that, denied it. As I was thinking about it and as I did some other research, I came to two, to me, important things. One, you know how many vacant lots there are on that portion of Broad Hollow? Two, ladies and prays, those are the only two on there. And they were concerned about setting a precedent to have R-119. to have R-119. Do you know what this commission did and what the council did? We approved a rezoning for an R-119 on Skylight, Skylight, which is an extension of Broad Hall. How could we be consistent? In one sense, we give it to somebody and somebody else, we say you can't have it. Basically the same. So, that's my salary breaks. Well, I mean, everybody was notified.
And everyone's.
Your property touches that one, this requested zone change. You are by law to be notified.
Within three hundred feet.
We, we touch.
Okay.
The way we're required to notify is by posting it on the state site.
And letters were sent.
We do those things.
So, we recently bought a house which is what touches that property. Recently, when the waters died, it was weird. I just don't think that the city records.
A win, as win, a, a win in three hundred feet, individual notification, not the general.
Right, it was letters.
So, you told me that all of my neighbors weren't given it.
But, did she say you were not because?
That we were not because she wasn't, she wasn't aware, we were on the list.
Did you want it approved?
Um, no, I want it, that's it. I don't want it approved necessarily, but.
We get one, one, I guess, a little bit of, um, we get a list of the, of the joining property owners from the person who's requesting the zone change. So, it's possible that we were shortsighted in not verifying that uh because that's, that's the normal process. And then we send letters out, individual letters to all the property owners that are identified and their address and contact information is included as well, so.
That property probably is still listed with the county, maybe hasn't been updated, but.
It has.
If it was two years ago, it's.
It's, it's definitely updated.
Okay, yeah.
But a lot of people would, I'd say, generally, when I look up something, if I were to look it up on the county or property, it's probably still going to show up as waters when I look it up, even though it's been changed.
No, I, I, I did my verification.
I understand and, and I think it's, um, it's something we need to be careful about. And every situation is, is different too. And I remember the discussion about a creep that it, they would go up to settlement or go up to
And they're all built on it too.
No.
Yes.
But down Oak.
Yeah? Woodland Hills Drive, I mean, there's, there's vacant, so your points, I understand.
Are you talking about the Doobie? Which lot are you talking about?
Doobie, no, no, not Doobie's, the next one over, one that's right on. Who's that?
They just built a house a few years ago.
Right over, right over.
Across the street from where Cherries used to live. Next to our.
Wyatt Scott, Scott, Scott Wyatt.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's a lot changed to be approved also. Because the lot next to them, they, they wanted to divide so they could build storage. Because the property still had access on Mount Bill, so.
Very good. We, uh, in, in so many things in the city, we do strive for consistency and treating things the same if, if circumstances are the same. I know they're not always the same, but they're sometimes close to being the same, but, uh, anyway, in, in, in city matters, we, we look to try to give equal, equal treatment and not show any kind of.
When the prayers come in and want to divide, we need to remember.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. Very good, anything else? Yes. Bring this one to the mailman. Yeah. Okay. Uh, take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, I, I'm looking for.
I'll take a motion.
You want to first?
I thought you made a motion.
No, no.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I need to leave, I'm getting tired.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning? Aye, any opposed? Very good, thank you for. A little bit, there is a public, this.